Yes. Yeah. I could have held up, but I.
Yeah, my area, they have this with twenty-one. Yeah. These old notes, though.
On him, yeah.
Lee Clevenger.
President.
Phil Giffins.
Here.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Tyler Rattari.
Here.
Rich Bass.
President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have the Eastshore Corporation wanted to meet with the town council today, and I believe Kathy Clark is here, and some of the reps from the Eastshore Corp. are with the online call. Do you want to go ahead and introduce Kathy who is joining us?
Hey Karen, there's no picture, we don't see anybody.
Well, we're sorry about that, we've got technical issues. But I do want to remind everyone, if you do participate in the call online, you are giving your permission to be recorded because these meetings are recorded. We're sorry that you can't see anything, there is a camera on, we just clearly have a technical issue. Jim, we can see you on camera.
Wow.
Kathy's here in the room, is anyone joining you tonight?
Well Fritz Steck is supposed to be here, I don't really know if he's on or not, Fritz? Well how about if I just get going since we're first on the list, is that okay Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so we're here on behalf of Eastshore Corporation, and the topic of discussion is explaining our potential expansion of need for approximately twenty connections. And to give you some contextual information, we've been working diligently since July the sixteenth, when Bob Porter and his effort, we were able to connect to the town and the town's treatment facility, which was a great day for both the Eastshore Corp. and all the residents out there. And the other effort has been around conveyance of the assets of Eastshore Corp. to the Eastshore Conservancy District, which was formed about eighteen months ago or so. That, the plan for that is to close and convey the assets of Eastshore Corp. to the district hopefully in May of this year. And we'll be using the Indiana Finance Authority and raising and selling some bonds to accomplish that. And as part of the process, what we thought would occur is hopefully what's going to occur. We've connected a hundred and two residents and soon to be a one hundred and three, and we have a hundred and thirty in the current agreement. And with, with the nineteen or twenty lakefront properties, there's Fritz. In addition, eight non-lakefront, that would take us to a hundred and thirty or thirty-one or thirty-two. And there are some properties that might want to build a home or two. So we, we just want to make sure that we had some expansion connection points with, with the town. And given the fact that we're about, I think, like fifty percent of peak on our flow, and Bob would know these numbers better than myself, that's what we're here to talk about. And Fritz, are you there? Need, you need to unmute yourself Fritz.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I feel like the old phone commercial.
That's correct.
What, what have you, I'm sorry I'm late checking in, I had a little technical difficulty.
That's okay, I just gave him the background.
User error.
Yeah, you might want to talk about the, possibly the I U R C and.
Yeah, I was going to give just a quick synopsis of where we've come from. You've talked a little bit about the numbers. Of course, last, it's been a year ago, we executed a contract with the town to take our sewage. We got our force main installed and active in July of twenty, and was working very well to this point, we're happy with that. I know that we have two pumps on order for the town, that we're going to upgrade the lift station just down, just west of where we come into the system. So that's an order in process, and as soon as those pumps arrive, I think infrastructure, the contractor will be in touch with Bob and we'll get started on that project. As far as Eastshore Corp., we have passed muster with the Department of Natural Resources, they approved our district plan and are now forwarding that on to the I U R C for their approval. Our hearing with the I U R C is primarily to approve the transfer of assets and terminate our existing CTA. And that would then give the district the authority over the infrastructure sewer and all of the collections. Right now, things are pretty fluid, they're all going, I think, very well. We have had a pretty extensive interview with the OUCC, which is kind of a precursor to going to the I U R C. So we have gotten good marks from them, and that, that report's been moved on to those who need it in the I U R C. So we, we feel like certainly as Eastshore Corp., and I think Jim may have touched on this, but we, we really started drilling down on those properties within our district, certainly those properties that are on the lake that are not yet connected to the sewer, those vacant parcels that could be developed. You know, and all of a sudden, the numbers were right at a hundred and thirty. And although I think it will take a fair amount of time to reach that, I think we would be wise to have a capacity for the long term at a hundred and fifty. So we are submitting to you guys for your review and approval and amendment to the original contract. And I think that Kathy Clark has sent to Karen that document, and I think my understanding is that Karen has passed it around to the council and also Mr. Clevenger for their review. We obviously are not looking for any action tonight, but we just wanted to be able to get that document in your hands and then come back at a later date to discuss if there are any questions or suggestions that you guys might have. Jim, I don't know that there's anything else that I offer there.
I would give it back to Karen or to Jim or to Jenny or whoever it might be.
Sure, yeah, I think what we would want to do on this end is have Bob take a look at this, have our engineer take a look at this, and make, you know, give us their recommendation if, if everything looks okay, have our Jim look at this as well, and then, you know, schedule another follow-up with all of you if that's all right.
You bet, that's, that's kind of what we anticipated, and that, that would certainly be fine. So certainly appreciate your consideration in the past, and hopefully we'll.
Who came up with the numbers?
I think they.
Well, would you repeat that?
Yeah, this is Jim Clevenger, I just asked Kathy where the, how the amounts that were listed in the proposed agreement were, how they were derived at or derived. And she says you just basically like prorated of the original contract, that, that satisfied my answer, I didn't have the originals in front of me, I'm just curious.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions from the council before we, okay? So we will take a look, have some other folks take a look, and schedule a follow-up with you guys if that's all right.
That's great.
Thank you.
Right, sure.
Thanks for that.
Update as well.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, let me get back to my agenda. Next on the agenda, we have Lee Marshall coming in to talk about marketing and digital marketing. Lee, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for letting me speak to you, my name is Lee Marshall, I grew up here in Culver. My career was in New York as an executive recruiter, my clients made me find and assess senior level talent, I mean, you wouldn't know that by now dressed today, but my husband and I retired here in two thousand seventeen, and I'm on Culver BZA, and my husband Paul DeBenedictus is on CRC. I'm here because I have real concerns about how marketing and branding has been handled and how much that handling has cost Culver. I'm here also because I wanted to be part of public record, and I tried to convince the council to reconsider the amount of money that it has been spending for no real intention or action, and to try to convince the council to consider other options, I just think we can do much, much better. I know CRC's been looking at the same issue, I intend to speak with them as well, but I want to quickly just address three main points. One, just a bit of history, two, current status, and three, proposal for potential solution. Point number one, there's a group of people here in Culver, a small group, who identify themselves under two different names, Develop Culver and Find Culver, which is also known as the Visitor Center, but I'm just going to refer to them as Develop Culver and Find Culver. The names are two different five oh one C threes with two different E I Ns, allowing them to ask for money from the town in two different ways. Both the council and CRC have been refunding these two groups to do marketing and branding for approximately six years. And never once in either of these groups interact with the council or CRC on a regular basis regarding a strategy for any marketing or branding, for the town, for the chamber, or for any events. These two groups, by the way, are comprised of the same five people. I went all the way back to two thousand seventeen, that's all that's accessible online, and I read all the minutes from both the CRC and council meetings. Since two thousand seventeen, there have been no plans, no strategies, no approaches, no tactics, no data, no marketing results ever shared by Find Culver or Develop Culver in any of the minutes that I've read from the council. And there's one appearance by Daniel Maverick in two thousand nineteen with CRC. So do you know how many times Find Culver has interacted with you guys in the last five years about a plan for branding and marketing? Zero. Do you know how many times Develop Culver has interacted with you in the last five years about a plan for marketing and branding? That's also zero. Karen Heim was nice enough to share some numbers. In the last six years, Find Culver's been paid over one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars between CRC and the council. That doesn't include any monies given to them this year or any of the monies that you've given to the other E I N number known as Develop Culver. So you easily have two hundred thousand dollars plus invested in these two E I N numbers with the same people. They may be one of the most expensive vendor relationships that you have, that you have no performance metrics or deliverables of any kind required of them. And I think they've taken advantage of that. In addition to what the council and CRC was paying Find Culver slash Develop Culver, they also asked the chamber to sign a marketing contract about thirty months ago. So apparently, they didn't feel that the money they got from council and CRC required them to promote local businesses, they, those businesses had to sign an additional contract. Ultimately, the chamber fired Find Culver slash Develop Culver for non-performance that you guys and CRC kept paying them. In addition to council money, CRC money, and the chambers money, Find Culver slash Develop Culver tried to obtain another one hundred and five thousand dollars in funding for a three-year, non-cancelable contract, I just want to say that again, non-cancelable contract, with CRC to run economic development for Culver in addition to the marketing and branding. If that contract had managed to get by CRC, Culver would be paying approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars every three years to this small group of people. So point number two is quickly, current status, my husband Paul DeBenedictus is on CRC. He was troubled by twenty thousand just being moved over at the beginning of every year to Find Culver slash Develop Culver with absolutely no data, no presentation, no interaction. And the only explanation that he could get from the two members that were on Develop Culver slash Find Culver's boards, who also used to sit on CRC, was that quote, "This is part of our overall branding strategy." Those members never volunteered to explain what the overall branding strategy was, nor did anyone else from their boards ever show up to do that. Find Culver slash Develop Culver were finally specifically asked in October, October of last year, two thousand twenty, by all, to share data with CRC on what they've done, and on the strategy, and on why they should be given twenty thousand dollars. They finally showed up in February of this year, five months later, half a year, to provide any information, and, sorry, but that information was a ridiculous thirty-slide powerful presentation. I mean, I've seen hugely complex deals described in fewer slides. And then finally, just the third point, is there another approach? I believe we need to seek out competitive bids for our marketing and branding efforts. In fact, given the amount of money, I'm surprised it's not required. Because otherwise, why? Why would you continue to hire people who never interact, who are hugely exclusive, who dislike our chamber, who haven't updated the Visitor Center website in at least eight months, who have no plans and no strategy, and who completely ignore you? Why is that okay? And more important, why is it okay for us, the town of Culver? I think we need to find someone who will interact with everybody, all the businesses, to chamber, the landlords, and help us tell our story, rather than abdicating at all to a small, disinterested group. But it'd be a better idea if council put together a jointly planned effort with a committed, inclusive, friendly group that looks for professionals who agree to accountability and metrics. Cheryl Morty's given me some names, and I already started talking to a few groups, and they've just been so impressive, just in the way they interact, they're so totally open with data, with their financials, and their approach, they're completely the opposite of Find Culver slash Develop Culver. They also send out weekly updates and ideas for how to better market our business. And I think that was great to, that all our businesses could have access to something like that. So I understand that you are busy, and this will be a lot of work. You have to sit through hours of interviewing people and listening to presentations. But that's kind of, in my opinion, what you should do before you spend money. But I'd be willing to help, I'll do along with a council member, chamber, CRC. Obviously, the one thing is we probably have someone who is conflicted. I think you'd find also with a new group that you'd have an actual partner, someone who would show up and share data and give advice. So when Find Culver slash Develop Culver showed up in February for that presentation, Morty goes for one, one of their board members made an interesting comment, and it struck me because it's not how I think, that I think in terms of money, I think of earning money. He said the number one priority they had was to quote stabilize our funding. And then he asked poor Jenny to go to the county and get them some more cash. Didn't say, "We are very focused on improving our performance." Didn't say, "We want to interact more consistently with the council and CRC." He said, "We want to stabilize our funding." Because funding is not generally tied to performance, just like a non-cancelable contract. You can't fire me no matter how poorly I perform because you fund me, it's money, accountability. And that is not a customer-focused approach, that is a completely self-centered approach. And I think we need to find a group that is customer-focused, ties pay to performance. So I just hope the council would think that it's in Culver's best interest and the best use of Culver taxpayer money and our businesses' money to meet some other groups and compare what they offer, and see how they can help us and make a truly educated decision. And I'll help find those people to talk to, I'll work with the group to interview and assess Find Culver slash Develop Culver's competition, bad group, however it's constructed, and bring you pricing and metrics and results, and they'll do it all for free. So I'm just asking that one, you create some sort of mandate for to do this. And two, where I realize some money has already been committed, that neither you nor CRC will commit any more money to Find Culver slash Develop Culver until other groups have been vetted to potentially provide the same services.
Questions and comments? Council, anyone?
Nothing.
Is anyone on the call from Develop Culver or Find Culver or who wants to respond at this time?
Hi Jenny, this is Tracy, I'm president of the board of both Culver Lake Max Visitor Center and Develop Culver, my statement will be short. I would just say that some of what was said tonight is just simply not accurate, and in some cases wildly and recklessly untrue and disappointing. And I think the best step going forward is for me to confer with my board, and we will be happy, as we have done in the past, to respond to the town council in writing and certainly for the public record. So that's all I'm going to say about it tonight, and I will follow up with the board with accurate and factual information, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'd like to let the council, you know, process all of that because it's a lot to process, and, and it looks like you had stuff typed up, Lee, that would be useful to send it to the council in terms of, you know, so people can refer back to it as well. I, you know, just off the cuff, the, the history of both those organizations, a lot of the formation of those organizations started around the time we were considering doing a stellar initiative. And in fact, we were encouraged by the OKRA liaison to have a Main Street organization, which is what Develop Culver is, there was already a Visitor Center, and Main Street organizations allow you access to certain grant dollars, and it's a, OKRA wants you to have that type of organization because it does bring a group of volunteers to the work capacity, and the main goal of that being to promote business in Culver. I know from last year, two thousand, that as we were working on COVID small business aid grants, we relied heavily on, on Develop Culver to bring together the businesses, and we did it through a social media format because we couldn't meet in person for obvious reasons. But I, I felt that that was a really important catalyst to us all working with the business organizations together, the council, chamber was involved in those meetings, tons of businesses, we probably had forty-five or fifty in that online forum. And they really initiated all of that communication and that sort of bringing together the businesses to let the council know what their needs were, what they were going through as businesses in the midst of this sort of crazy pandemic stage. So I find, I found that to be of high value, aside from this, you know, the marketing branding piece. I never looked at council as necessarily funding, marketing, branding so much as because Develop Culver received some Marshall County tourism dollars, there's certain things they can and can't pay for, and certain things that the CRC could and couldn't pay for. So I looked at our piece of that as helping those businesses operate in general, pay a director, et cetera. Because we weren't as limited in what you could pay for. So, you know, I don't think of that entity as just a branding, marketing entity, if you will. And certainly, it's one of the things that I think is a goal of the organizations. But that's just me sort of explaining my perception of those organizations over time, and just one of the roles they played last year, for example. So, but I, personally, I, I would need to process all of that and think through what you're telling us as a body. And they, you know, I know that from your reading of minutes, there's this perception they haven't communicated with council. At budget time, a lot of these entities do come in, including Develop Culver and Visitor Center, and even in the past, Boys and Girls Club and, and other organizations that we've supported, some of those being county-level ones, like the Council on Aging. And so we do hear from the organizations at those times, a lot of times we get an annual report in that format, and it's not necessarily something you're going to find meeting minutes. Sort of point to that as, it's not that there's been a lack of contact. And in some cases, some of those people sit on other initiatives, like several of those people were involved in stellar communities. And we relied heavily on some of those people to do the work of stellar communities, whether it was the Main Street Group, Chamber, pretty much all of the organizations across the board joined that effort. So I don't want to fully address that point, but I am just telling you off the cuff my own experience of having communicated with some of the people involved in those organizations.
I remember you sharing that information with me through an email. I looked all the budget minutes online, there wasn't anything about anybody coming to the council event either, and I don't know whether, it just isn't included in the minutes, but those minutes are covered, but those are separate meetings, but there was never anything about anybody coming and presenting to you, and maybe they don't, maybe they just send you something, and then you have a budget meeting. My point is that when somebody is an offender, when you're a offender, you're not. when you're a vendor, you're not consulting or you're a vendor. That means I'm going to pay you to do something. That puts you in different categories, even if it's part of what you do. When you say, I'm not going to do this anymore because I'm not good at it, I don't have the time for it, or whatever. Once you put yourself out there as a vendor and you're up against every other vendor, and that has to be fairly assessed, there may be something that they do well. But if you're saying, I'm a vendor and I can market and grant and sell this town like nobody else, then you need to be compared as a vendor.
Yeah. No, I don't disagree with you. I think it's fair to ask for metrics and fair to ask for reporting. I do think CRC was the funding agency for specifically branding because that was something they can pay for. Whereas with us, it's operations, with Marshall County Tourism, that their dollars are also specifically limited. And in fact, you know, they did decide to pull some funding, not from a metrics or performance standpoint, but because they wanted to spread equity across the communities in Marshall County. And the only reason that I did go to Marshall County Tourism wasn't so much because Develop Culver said, could you please do this? It's because we are generating huge amounts of tourism taxes off those Airbnbs. And as an elected official, my job is to make sure some of those dollars come back to our community. And when they pulled those dollars, I felt like it was our duty to say, not right to pull those dollars because we're the ones generating them. I'd feel the same way if somebody tried to pull our property tax dollars. So I didn't go there specifically to say Develop Culver deserves these dollars. I went there and said Culver deserves these dollars because we're a tourism industry. We're generating those dollars, and I will stand by that every time. Whether there's a Develop Culver or not, those dollars should come back to this community and help us with our own tourism industry. So, you know, that, and yeah, were we funneling some of those dollars through those entities? Yes, because they do tourism, they do do, part of that, part of their job is to attract people here, marketing events, a ton of marketing of events. And that I saw with my own eyes come out of Develop Culver and Visitor Center, lots and lots of social media and flyers and working with Amber and other people in the community on marketing events. There's no doubt in my mind that type of work came out of Develop Culver and Visitor Center because I physically see it. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, the Marshall County Tourism piece of that too.
Right, and I agree, and I think there could be an argument made about Marshall County Tourism. Anytime you have a tax, you can argue about what taxes do, right? Redistribute wealth essentially. And I always say, in some ways, we're sort of the evil 1% of the Marshall County tourism dollars, you know? And I'm sure there are a lot of people that feel like we should have to redistribute it. But not that I agree with that, I'm just saying.
Right.
I'm sure there's a lot of.
And in my mind, the council and the CRC wouldn't even have to fund so much these entities if we were getting our fair piece of that tourism tax that we create.
Sure.
Ideally, we wouldn't have to do it at all because that money would be there. And it should be, you know, it should be that, sort of like a machine of feeding that system. So, anyone else?
I would just go back, it's all about metrics and performance. It's all about being the vendor and what you offer as a vendor. Because once you put yourself into that role, it's more buying a service and it becomes a different kind of relationship. There's a difference in performance metric required, in my opinion, different performance metric required. And if, you know, you can't show up and talk about it and what it is and show actual data, this is the number of hits our website is getting. It's not what we're doing, we're either doing it well or we're not doing it well. That type of data, there's no arguing about how you feel about it, it is there. You know, we're either doing our job, we're doing it really well, or it's not. And that data will show it. And that's the type of stuff I'm saying that should be required of anybody.
I follow you on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I've done web metrics myself, so I follow.
You have, yes, exactly, so, yeah. And then you've never, ever seen any of it. And the other thing is, just a parallel connection, Facebook is doing a slow rollout. You're not going to be able to see anything on Facebook anymore unless you have an account. So all that stuff's going to die, all the stuff where you post on, about the town, over, you know, the town of Culver, Facebook. Eventually, you'll only be able to see those postings if you have an account. So I'm just doing that out there as a information.
Anything else on this topic, guys? Okay, all right, thank you, Lee. Okay, next, we've got the item grant agreement for electric vehicle charging stations. I do not. I can probably, is this one of the ones you sent here and I can pull it up? Yeah. I saw it today.
Okay, I was going to say, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, but, yeah.
Actually, it'd be easier for me to read off of here than off the computer screen. All right, so you guys know we received the grant to put these stations in. And I'm assuming we need to be, I need to be authorized to sign this.
A station, isn't it just one station?
I believe it's just two. I think it's two.
One location.
No, one, you get in my mind, I thought it was.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll read the purpose of the contract here.
It's one station, but it has two charging abilities. So two parking spots will be dedicated to electric charging.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Bob. So the, under the purpose section of this, this is the purpose of the agreement is set for the process whereby Item, as a beneficiary lead agency directs the trustee, the Volkswagen Diesel Emissions Environmental Mitigation Trust, to make payment in the amount of nine thousand to the grantee for reimbursement of eligible costs of the project described in attachment A of this agreement, which is incorporated fully herein. The funds shall be used exclusively in accordance with the provisions contained in this agreement, the requirements of Volkswagen Diesel Emissions Environmental Mitigation Trust and applicable Indiana law. The funds received by the grantee pursuant to this agreement shall be reimbursed for approved project costs in accordance with this agreement. They cite the funding source of Volkswagen Diesel, representation and warranties of the grantee, that says expressly represents and warrants to Item that the information set forth in the funding application is true, complete, and accurate. There's an implementation and reporting requirements section. It says the grantee shall implement and complete the project in accordance with attachment A and the plans and specifications contained in its funding application. Modification of the project shall require prior written approval. The project shall also conform to all requirements as detailed in the Item Request for Proposals, announcing the availability of EV infrastructure funds that closed on September twenty-third, 2020. The grantee shall submit to Item written progress reports until completion of the project. These reports shall be submitted in accordance with the reporting schedule contained in attachment B and should contain such detail of progress or performance on the project as required under the terms of the Volkswagen Diesel Environmental Mitigation Trust. The term is, this agreement commences on the date of the last signatory and shall remain in effect until December thirty-two, unless otherwise provided herein, it may be extended upon the written agreement of the parties and as permitted by Volkswagen. Funding, the grantee shall be reimbursed in accordance with the approved project budget as set forth in attachment B. The dispersment of funds to the grantee shall not be made until all documentary materials required by this agreement and received and certified by Item. There's project monitoring that will occur by Item according to this. Then there's compliance with audit and reporting requirements. There's the maintenance of records. Notice to parties, notices to Item shall be sent to, and it lists that person's name, notices to the grantee are sent to Jonathan Weis. Termination for breach, failure to complete the project in accordance with this agreement may be considered a material and shall entitle Item to suspend the grantee's participation in the Volkswagen Diesel Emissions Mitigation Trust program. The expenditure of funds other than in accordance with the purpose of this agreement, the project of the Volkswagen Diesel Trust may be deemed a breach of this agreement. The grantee exclusively covenants that it shall promptly repay to Item all funds not spent in accordance with this agreement. So we need to conform with the agreement. Then there's a non collusion acceptance page. And then you've got the scope of the work permit, which is the attachment A. And they, that has purchase, installation, operation, and maintenance of Level Two electric vehicle charging equipment. The grantee shall purchase, install, and maintain Level Two electric vehicles' charging equipment that meets the technology and reporting requirements of the Indiana Statewide Electric Vehicle Charging Network Program. There's also non-budgetary item tasks the grantee shall provide the following services, electric vehicle charging equipment and network coordination, progress reports, and usage data reports, as well as a final report. Each of those reports is outlined in this attachment. And then I'm assuming this next appendix is the schedule that they referred to. There's current budget details and project schedule. This project schedule would start now and end December thirty-one, 2022. Do you think we should take this under advisement and have Jim review it? Or do you feel like this is probably standard?
Yeah, seems like I did look at it and it must have been like, it was standard, like, the next one, yeah. Maybe Doug has sent that to you?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah.
So would you like a motion to authorize signature, Karen, and then go from there?
We accept the agreement and authorize.
Yeah, I mean, it's an item, it's a grant agreement.
I make a motion that we authorize Jenny to sign the item agreement.
All righty.
I make a motion that we authorize Jenny to sign the item agreement with the EV station.
I believe Rich seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Take care of that.
You got to oppose, you got to oppose. Oppose.
Yep.
You got him, okay, you got him, okay.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda is Lake Max Trail Phase Three. I wanted to give you guys an update because we've been talking about this for quite some time. And I am going to read to you an email from Head of School so that you hear it straight from me and I will forward you all copies. Hold on one second, I need to bring it up. Okay, here we go. So as you guys know, the Academy was considering the alternative route, which they would like for us to pursue that alternative route. And what they would like to do, they've written an informal letter, this is not in a contract format or anything like that, but they would like us to pursue that route with NDOT. As part of that, they were willing to share costs to do that preliminary work, which would be a survey and preliminary engineering and environmental, because all that still has to be done on a new route. They would like to cap sharing that cost at twenty-five thousand. And in exchange, they would agree to give us all of the easements necessary for that route without charge, if we would be agreeable to that. What they would like to do in writing, though, is also put that in writing, but also say that they would like the town to guarantee that we would not in the future put a route down Academy Road and State Road Ten. So they don't want to see that ever happen. And if they get, if we support going an alternative route with them down the railroad corridor, crossing over Ten and heading further north, coming out, they also don't want to have this route at any point pass down Seventeen. Now, originally, we were going to Seventeen around the lake?
What's it?
One Seventeen, sorry. So originally, this route would have come down State Road Ten and taken, gone right onto One Seventeen. Then eventually, it would hit out into the country because east shore is too narrow. But I think it was going to head out into the country somewhere around.
Eighteen, four.
Yep, eighteen. So they didn't like the idea of going down One Seventeen because of the summer school kids crossing the street there and being that close to campus. So if we agreed to go this alternative route, that would be one of the conditions they'd want to put in an agreement. Now, side note, NDOT sometimes will fund more to a grant if they have it. And their fiscal year ends in July. Because sometimes toward the end of their fiscal year, you can go back and say, and we have more funds for this grant project, it's more money than we thought it would be. So we can request that preliminary engineering and that survey money. And they may say, yes, we'll give you fifty thousand, they may say, no. If they say yes, you would still have to make the twenty percent match. If we said, well, ideal to have fifty thousand to cover this preliminary costs, you'd have to come up with ten thousand, in which case, if the Academy is willing to share costs, they could cover that. But this is, this is what they would like us to consider. If we are agreeable to that, and if you authorized me to write NDOT a letter to see if they were willing to add to this grant, we can certainly write them to see what they would do. But I explained to Doug that I would take his letter back to all of you and see what you thought of this alternative route and the conditions that they would put on it.
To refresh my, I know you talked about
That's closer to the number that NDOT had already spent on the project and we had a match on that. It's really closer to fifty thousand total, twenty percent being the town's part, and the other eighty percent came out of NDOT. So what NDOT had told us is, if you don't do this project at all, you have to pay back that money. If you do an alternative route, we won't necessarily give you that money to do that upfront. So we do know that they will not take money out of the construction phase. Normally, you've got all this money in construction phase. They won't move any of that to the front phase, the preliminary work. They have confirmed that with us.
If you play this off where you can see, twenty?
Up to twenty-five thousand. According to Mike Reese, we're looking at about the same as the original route, probably around fifty thousand. They don't have an exact cost, he's contacted the surveyor and asked for an estimate that, you know, your survey may be give or take five thousand depending on what you're surveying. So we don't currently know exactly what that would be. But that was his rough estimate, was we'd still come in around the same amount as the first route. Yeah, I think NDOT is fairly responsive. They would probably get back to us, Rich, within about two weeks. I don't think it's like months. Marcia, we asked Marcia if you could move any of the construction dollars. She got back to me within twenty-four hours on that and said, no, they will not. And she may say, I won't have an answer for you on that until close of fiscal year, in which case, we don't have that kind of time.
Original route, we put it on Academy Road and then
State Road Ten.
State Road Ten, then it went on Seventeen at some point. State Road ten, then it would run seventeen to some point. East or something.
Yes.
And caveat is you wouldn't go on Academy. You wouldn't go on again, or you wouldn't go.
Yes, and the boot, Jim, we had it given right of way from the county to do the project when it was Academy Road and State Road ten. NDOT had given us right of way on State Route ten and one seventeen. But we'd actually have to go back to the county too to get, hey, if the route changes, now we're talking about different roads in the county than we were before. So we'd still have to get that approval before we could tell NDOT where to go.
And CMA values, you know, railroad right of way. New, alternate.
It's the old railroad corridor. Yeah, they have right of way along that whole stretch. Well, the, the route would continue north. A lot of their property goes out there by um their facility buildings. Pass those, then it would go out into the country. And some of that route would become shared road space where we would have to ask for signage from the county. In other cases, you have right of way to put in trail there. Um, so and, you know, we haven't done preliminary engineering bill. So it's hard to tell yet until you've done that preliminary engineering.
But this, we're hoping to. Allow easy access, not just on the.
On their other property. Yes.
Stick with the Academy Road and stick with the.
No, we have right of way on Academy Road and State Road ten. The State Road ten right of way sixty feet. You can actually get right of way there.
But you could continue the. Maintain our current position. We go down Academy Road ten. Then the trail could go down ten and it could down one step. I think personally, I think I personally like our position right now.
Jenny, I have a question. This is Russ. Uh, is there, are we discussing alternatives? Do we have to go with the Academy plan? I'm not understanding this very well.
No, we don't have to. We can stick with the original route. The academy would really like us to go with an alternate route. And originally, they weren't interested in any route until we decided we were gonna stick with our original route of Academy Road and State Road ten.
It ju- it just sounds to me like they're putting an awful lot of conditions on you. And I, I think you need to think about that before you make a final decision.
I would see, I, I mean, I appreciate the, you know, what they're asking us to give up on this. I think the ideal plan initially would have been to pick the railroad right of way um and not the Academy Road route, just because it is more. Remote, and it is more like a trail through the woods there. Walking down, you know, Academy Road on a, you know, equal wide right of way. And but, but since it is committed to that. Seems like there are a lot of conditions to this.
On their, on their easement, Kenny, is it just railroad, uh, you know, railroad end that they're willing to give this easement on? Or does that easement also include? Because if you go out to, you know, heading towards sixteen feet.
Yeah, that includes that.
Property on both sides of the road.
Yeah.
Until you make the first turn. And then there's about three houses and one other property that privately owned. And then wrong intentions and purposes on the south, they own the majority of that all the way around to State Road ten again.
And they, they said it wouldn't just be quarter. Like, we said that route is gonna go much further than the railroad quarter. We'd keep going north and then eventually we'd go east. And we'd end up all over their property.
I think if that, if their easement included all of that. At no cost to us the trail. Um, that would definitely be a handset. Because you had to buy that easement um from property owners along one seventeen.
Yeah, it would cost quite a bit.
It would cost quite a bit.
Well, the only, the only, uh, I understand what we were thought about, that it goes down one seventeen, which is all Academy property, but it's a state highway. Then it goes left at the county road. So basically, there's no easement needed. I mean, the state and the county are the ones gotta give the easement.
Yeah, you're working in right of way then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and, you know, we did think about it from the standpoint of the biker and the walker. Um, the corridor route and going north onto their property there. Uh, probably more scenic, maybe safer than going along the highway. I mean, those sorts of things have come up in that conversation. Um, and I, you know, I'm not a big biker myself. I do like to walk our trails. But um, you know, for them, it was, we prefer that because you'll not come as close to campus or have to take out a fence or a tree. Or, you know, they do have stuff built in the right of way right now on State Road ten.
It is complicated, this issue with.
Sure. Again, the. The rendering, et cetera.
Now, this is an alternative. I mean, that was the one. Take a map and draw a line and show where the alternative would go.
I think that's a great idea, Rich, to work session.
Even just on a, on a linear footage, you could probably give us an estimate. This sounds like it may be a lot more heavy. And that comes into question too, is that covered by the.
Right. Right.
We increase the, the, the category of blacktop by twenty percent. We produce alternative route. Um, that's.
Yeah, what's that look like? Well, and right now, Mike's estimate is you'd get more out of the construction budget with that alternative route.
You know, from years of working over bikers and joggers, favorite way of going around the academy down Green Road up to sixteen seas, crossing down Sycamore.
Yeah. And I do want a more piece to this. So um, I had been talking to Bob about that alternative uh, because it would go right past Fleet Parkway. We have water pressure issues and, and Bob's been wanting to fix that. So he would request that part of any agreement would be that we would get a utility easement to take care of that project, because he'd like to run water from Academy Road um, down that route of the potential trail to fix what's going on over there. So we could, you know, say, okay, not only do we want the easements on the trail, but we want a utility easement to fix Fleet Parkway. Wait, water's a good thing, right? Clean water especially.
Clean water.
Clean water is good.
So, uh, work session, do you wanna try to do this as early as next week? Do you want me to reach out and see if we could get the designer here? Or do you wanna wait till before the next regular meeting? To me, the sooner the better, because we're already behind schedule with NDOT on this.
I would think having Mike there would be helpful, though. I mean, since he's, Jonathan's not here, Mike's been intimately involved in all the trail projects.
Right.
And I think probably would be the best resource for information and also maps or, or, I don't wanna have him generate all sorts of.
And Doug also.
I think we would just invite him if he can.
Right, obviously.
Get a date with.
Yeah, we just let him know.
So availability wise, could you guys give me? Well. Karen will have to advertise. So if we could come up with our date, I can check with Mike. If Mike can't make that, we might have to have more than one potential date.
Okay.
Then once he could tell me, I could let Karen know what the advertisement would be for, if that works.
You take talking either the twenty third or the thirteenth, if you're doing it before council, unless you wanna do it on another day.
Yeah.
That might be long enough that it would be nice to do it on, for me, it'd be nice to do it on a different day.
Okay, council? Do you wanna try next Wednesday or Thursday? See if one of those two dates would work for him? And would like a four, four o'clock timeframe or?
Seventeenth or eighteenth?
Um, I know I can't myself on the seventeenth. I have an Okra uh panel thing on that date. So.
Eighteenth at four o'clock, that's a Thursday.
Okay.
Good, that's, yeah, that works for me.
Okay, Sally.
Okay. If that doesn't work for Mike, would the sixteenth or the nineteenth work for any of you?
Sixteen doesn't for me because of the library.
Okay.
Sixteen is, I think is C R C.
All right, well, let's see if we can get the eighteenth to work out.
The nineteen, uh, eighteenth or nineteenth would work for me.
The nineteenth, okay, here too.
Yeah, okay. All right, we will look at that for a work session and I'll follow up with Karen once I hear back from Mike on, and let you guys know. Okay. All right, next we have approve the annual financial report, which I think Karen is excited for us to approve. And I know she set that out earlier and had, Bill Clevinger has done a thorough review himself of that report. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
You reviewed it, go ahead. I moved and we approved the annual financial report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you again, Karen, for the excellent work you did on that. Uh, regional stellar plan update. Uh, I don't have any updates, but I wanna make sure. Um, Bob or Amber, do you guys have updates for the regional stellar projects?
Um, I mean, just from the. Uh, I have met with all the stakeholders in the area, so that would be affected by the project. So that would be the Lions Club, the farmer's market. And then I had a follow up meeting with Troyer Group. Um, and since then, they're just working on the preliminary design and represent that one.
Great, thank you, Amber. Bob, do you have any updates on the message board or anything else?
As far as the message board sign itself, I haven't heard when that's gonna be installed. But the electric, the post is installed, the electric to the post is installed. Sally and I went to a pre-construction meeting for West Jefferson and State Road ten projects. They're gonna be starting here soon. I'll be getting quotes for that rain garden that we need, hopefully by the next meeting to get that constructed, so.
Great. Um, stellar plan update, any stellar plan project updates from anyone on those projects? Well, State Route ten was one of them that Bob just covered, so I think we're actually okay. So let's move on to department head reports. Jeff, are you on for EMS?
Yeah. Um, I just have one thing for the council manager, just recommendation from the interview process here that we had internally here to promote Doug Bruiser, a first, first time paramedic to full time status.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Yes, boss.
I, I shall move.
Uh, second by Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much.
All right, congratulations, you got the guy.
Anything for me from the council?
I don't believe so, anyone?
Thank you.
Uh, Terry, are you out there for the fire department? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Terry.
Hello, uh, we've got a few things I'm gonna run across you. You might have heard some of them before, but I just wanted to make sure that they're, that they're out there uh, to know that the fire department received a twenty five hundred dollar Marshall County community grant. We also have, we also have a, have filed for four other grants uh from, I might have about, the other meeting for SCBA's, radio, DNR, and also for Walmart to help our uh budget get along. We don't know exactly where they're at, they're all in an early stage. So when they, if they do come, knock on wood, uh, we'll be glad to have any of those. Um, we also have two new applicants for the department. Um, we're running through the pages of getting them to the point where we can put them in training, which we have got them signed up for a class that's supposed to be starting in about a month. So we'll have four people go into that class, which is kind of exciting for us. Four people in our department would really be a, a step in the right direction. Um, we have three other guys that are gonna be starting in April on a dive training. Uh, we're, our dive uh guys have, through the years, some of them have not kept up their certification or, or just can't do it anymore. So we're passing the buck to some of the younger guys, so we're putting them through dive class. We, I also finally received, thanks to Jeff and uh Mr. Clevinger reading through a letter of memorandum of understanding with the EMS so that we can, as fire department, become a uh VLS non-transport. Uh, we run a lot of VMS calls when the EMS is out of town and it ties our hands on things that we can and can't do. Uh, we do have some EMTs, some first responders and paramedic on our department. And uh, we're trying to fill a void that's been there for years. And hopefully, this goes to the state and comes back in thirty, sixty days, whatever comes back, and they'll pass us on this. And uh, we can do things like run an AED, which right now we are unlicensed to do. And I believe that is it, and I would thank Jenny for the brownie, it saved me.
There are more here, Terry, if you'd like a bit.
I'm in, it was good.
Thanks for all your work on the grants, the brownie is the least we can do.
All right, thank you.
Uh, police department, Wayne?
I just wanna give you an update. Uh, we've been putting in the two new guys. Uh, I currently have signed them up and started a satellite academy and working on the deep walls. Plan it out at Alton versus sending playing field. I think for playing field, but uh, I think in the circumstances, we just review this. Trying to think them fast. So they're currently ready to start, hopefully, uh, go for that testing on the ninth of April and start schooling on the twelfth. So it's kind of where we're at. Probably do it sometime. Just run the lot.
Yes.
We'll have one graduate sometime. If you're like.
Great. Thank you, Wayne. Oh, okay. Um. Yes, Marty, can you wait till citizen input?
Oh, sure, sure. I, um, regional stellar update news, that's all.
Oh, great, well, go for it, since we just covered it.
Yeah, um, the um unveiling of the Reese Marquee uh is this Saturday night at seven thirty. Um, we released the media alert earlier this afternoon. Um, and I just wanted to alert all of the members of the town council um, and uh, the local community that it is an event that you can attend either in person and there will be popcorn provided. Um, and uh, if not, you can make your own popcorn and participate via Facebook Live. Uh, you can do that by um liking our Facebook page, Marshall County, uh, crossroads dot com. And um. and, um, uh, and then you'll get an alert when the Facebook Live, um, starts. So the Reese Marquee is the Plymouth version of the electronic sign that's going in by, um, uh, by the school there for Culver. It's the first sign to be completed and, um, kind of a big deal for the Crossroads team to have this project, um, you know, coming to life. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, um, thank you to you, Jenny, for, um, for helping make this happen. When the, this actually was a stellar project at first, um, but you saw an opportunity to take advantage of a grant that became available through Okra, um, and for this, to get this project done even quicker. And, um, because of your efforts, uh, we have the sign to unveil on, uh, on Saturday night. So I wanted to acknowledge that and invite everybody to participate, um, either in person or by Facebook, come this Saturday for what will be an exciting event. We've got a nice, nice program set up for it.
Thank you, Marty. And on to the park.
I have a special event permit for the Quanis Benday on June nineteenth. Pretty, pretty poor, the same as always.
Taking donations for pens at Jefferson and Main and Academy Road and Lake Shore Drive. Motion to approve?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I just wanted to ask you guys before I went ahead and word with it. Um, Easter's coming up, um, I've been looking into an Easter egg hunt. Um, I looked around at other park departments, it looks like it to go. I reached out to the recreation director at Plymouth, um, they're doing it. Uh, they got approval from, and actually was encouraged by the health department. Um, so I'd like to go ahead and have an Easter egg hunt this year on Saturday, April third. Request that obviously everybody wear masks and, different than other years, I'd like to do the hunt throughout the entire park instead of a centralized location, um, to encourage that social.
Motion to approve an Easter egg hunt in the park?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next, I had the sidewalk drainage, uh, project, um, or down by the beach. Um, I have the quotes with me if anybody would like to have a look at it. Um, but we had the two, one from Thomas Excavating, one from Zainer Excavating. And if I could get, um, approval on those unless anybody has any questions regarding the two quotes I found out.
How much are the quotes?
So from, from Thomas Excavating, uh, we have sixty-five thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. From Zainer, we have eighty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars. Um, the project and, uh, is, the goal is to have this done by May tenth, that's what the contract will read out, um, to avoid the busy season. I spoke with Bob, he said that's foreseeable, we're looking at about three weeks of disruption for this project.
And this is really the stormwater part of it, the excavation?
Yeah, it's not just a sidewalk. If you, if you haven't noticed, the sidewalk from the lighthouse to the outdoor shower, um, that whole sidewalk is an absolute mess. We put as many Band-Aids as we can on it. Um, we have had instances where people have tripped on it. Um, and then last, all of the water runoff from that sidewalk is causing massive erosion on our beach, uh, shoreline, and it brings divots, um, off the sidewalk, right off of the outdoor shower. There's a huge drop-off, it's really dangerous. So, yeah, it would be a complete reconstruction of the sidewalk and also including updating, um, a drainage system as well.
On Jonathan's project notes as, as he was leaving, um, he had requested that we consider doing this in two phases. I think Amber and Bob, after the contract was in, Amber, Bob, Karen and I met, um, with one of the project folks, post the following, kind of council member. Um, it, it doesn't, it's not feasible to do it in two phases. It's true.
Yeah, essentially they have to put in one phase, and then the second phase would totally disrupt the first phase. So it would be more costly and disruptions twice, and they'd even have to repair what they messed up from the first phase anyway. So they were, it was just kind of an overrated to do it in one entire phase.
So that cost includes the paving of the side?
Sixty-five, sixty-five, it includes both.
The whole scope of the project.
Okay.
Contractor.
Okay.
There's forty thousand dollars budgeted currently in Amber's budget. Four of us talked about, um, the best course for that, the additional basically twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, consensus that, that come out of the park budget would be, would make the most sense. We looked at whether Bob's budget.
We looked at all of them, we had multiple conversations with Karen, and it's very difficult to, for it to be supported by what we have entered in, plus an additional preparation for the remaining.
How to percutiate?
Yes.
Another question. Um, there's fifteen thousand difference between the two, both same scope or?
Yep, yeah. Uh, Bob had met with them in the fall of twenty-twenty, explained it all out to them. Um, we had quotes from the fall, we had to get obviously updated quotes, and it's the same scope of the project.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract to Thomas Excavating for sixty-five thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars for the work at the park.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, thank you. We're looking forward to updating sidewalk that no longer be Band-Aids, uh, thank you, that's been great. Um, my next update is, um, all boat slips, wet skis, I X pedals have been paid for officially as of last week.
Wow.
Um, so we're good there, there's a long wait list to join. Um, then I'd like to update you guys on a project that sort of been keeping this under wraps because I wanted to confirm that it would be happening. Um, so as you're probably aware, um, we didn't quite get to complete the entire beach lodge, um, just because of funds. However, I did have a donor approach me and ask if they could fund the fireplace room on the lower level behind the concession and lobby area. Um, so the plan with that is to, um, get the flooring redone with that speckled flooring used to be in the concession stand area and have it expand out into the background, um, where all the, we explored different flooring options. We ultimately decided that the speckled flooring would be the best option just to continue that on. And then update the lock system down there. Um, there's four doors down there, uh, that didn't get put into the lock system. Um, so, um, as of right now, that's the plan for down there. I'm waiting officially to receive that check from the donor, but I have been informed that it is in the mail, and that's the plan for down there. Um, looking into the future, um, the reason we are updating this is my goal is to sort of turn it back into what it used to be, and that was the sort of like a hangout game area for, for the youth. So I'd really like to, in the future, once the flooring done, is done, once the lock system is done, to turn it into like a hangout space, maybe use some tabletop games down there. So, um, somewhere to go, um, especially when the weather is not as good during the winter months. So that's kind of an update on that project. Um, I'm getting quotes right now for the flooring, I have one, I need a second, obviously. So I'll keep you guys posted on that project.
Yeah, when you hear stories about Mike Overmeyer and Connie having one of their first dates there.
Right, yeah.
You think, okay, that, to, to be able to make it a teen.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have a lot of places for young people to.
Exactly.
Gather in a.
I've certainly heard a lot of stories from a lot of people about what that space needs to be, and I'd really like to, um, like to turn it back into like that.
I was excited when you mentioned the fireplaces, but I thought that's probably not a real.
No, unfortunately it's not. I, I, the plan is to get some furniture around them and, uh, have some tables to eat at and some games to play at, but I'm really excited about this project.
Congratulations on the donor.
Yes, very, very excited, very happy about it, so. Um, I'd like to also, last thing, Bones, um, give an update on the basketball court project. Um, as probably most people are aware, um, we had gathered funding for the Prairie Memorial, um, which will be the memorial basketball court. Um, the plan with those funds, we had to bounce around a lot of ideas for a while, but the plan as of right now is to get, um, the three bas, there's three basketball hoops, to get them all removed and replaced with two new basketball hoops. Um, install some teen benches on the west side of the court and have a memorial planter in the middle of those two benches. Um, so that's kind of the update on the Prairie Memorial, uh, fund. And then in response to, there's obviously a few more things we wanted to get done, um, but we did learn, obviously, money runs out very quickly. Um, I was approached by, um, the Culver Visitor Center, and we are currently applying to the AARP Community Challenge Grant. Um, uh, that would be the Culver Park Department and the Culver Visitor Center. And the plan is to apply for the grant and with the money, um, acquire a new court surface. Um, the, the surface of the court is in pretty poor condition and the lining's pretty faded. So we'd really like to restore it, um, which would include basketball lines, uh, lines for pickleball, uh, shuffleboard and hopscotch. Um, it, there's a, a really cool company that kind of combines all these things into one. So we're kind of playing around with it at the mo, at the moment. Um, so the new court surface, um, a bike pump and repair station, uh, some storage units for, you know, all the equipment and bike racks. So that's what we plan to put into that grant application, um, to, to kind of tag along, um, the memorial funds. Or the big, with the combination of the two, we can get all that done.
What's the size of the grant application?
Um, yes, so, uh, you, like the money.
Right.
How much you can get. It really, uh, Tracy's on, she can, uh, let you know specifically, but I believe it could go up to a hundred thousand. There's a, yeah, there's a huge range, so, and if you look at the projects, you see something from fifteen thousand to like ninety-five thousand, so.
So more than enough to get the word.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm going after.
I think with the community investing so much into the project, obviously that helps out a little bit with the application process. So I'll keep you guys posted.
Thank you.
It's kind of nice if that became multi-purpose court.
It would be great.
Yeah.
And especially because we have, we also have the town survey backing this up. Um, in the, when we did this survey for what everyone wanted to see with the beach lodge and then with the, uh, regional stellar play, playground project, um, one of the top responses was to get more outdoor games for, um, our older population. So it's going to be a great way to kind of cover all age range and ranges with the basketball court and pickleball and shuffleboards, so.
I'm glad.
We have all that support, so.
I'm glad to hear you guys paid close attention to those surveys.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
When you're going after grant dollars, they want to know that you're doing what your public is telling you to do, and that's.
We'll be doing the same with the, um, playground project as well. That will include at least, I told you earlier, if I want at least one, they, be an athlete, that's outdoor chess set, uh, bocce ball or something, there will be also included in that project as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Amber.
Yeah. Tracy, go ahead.
No, I, I think Amber summed it up nicely, but I will say, I think Bill, given to your question in terms of the AARP Community Challenge Grant, it's one of the most interesting, um, applications that, that I've ever worked on because it really is a range from, you know, a couple hundred dollars to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And there's everything in between, obviously, we're going to be in between. But, um, but yeah, I mean, it, it's really, um, and it's not, even though you hear AARP, it's not just focused on, um, ideas related to the older population, although we think with pickleball and shuffleboard and some of the other things that we've included, it'll appeal really multi-generational. So, um, so we're excited about it, the more, you know, community support we can get. So I think, you know, Amber and I may be reaching out to a number of organizations for letters of support as well, and the town council would be a great addition to that. So, um, so yeah, we're excited, but it's also very competitive.
Well, thanks, Tracy, and I, you know, the laundry list of items that she was, you know, her wish list, you could add it up real quick, and that's why I asked, you know, what we were going.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't added up, we're waiting for a couple quotes. Amber was talking to the surface person today in terms of the, um, work, so we'll, we'll get that for you.
Thank you.
I can, I mean, I can show you guys what we're, just a rough draft. I did get a quick rendering of essentially what it could look like, um, so ordinary now, but.
Oh, yeah.
With like the whole multi-service. Yeah, we'll see.
And possibly the logo, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's cool, right? We threw it in there, so we'll see what happens.
Uh, Tracy, thanks to the visitor center for working on that grant.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, Amber, any questions for Amber, you guys, or?
That is all.
Alright, Bob, are you still on for utilities?
Yes, I am.
Alright, go for it.
I just have a few items of business. Uh, first, could I get permission to advertise and hire two summer seasonal employees?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Second order of business, uh, it's, at the wastewater treatment plant, it's time to order more bags for our sludge removal. I have a quote for twelve of those for six thousand nine hundred dollars, could I get approval to purchase that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more quick thing, uh, we had two pumps go down at the Madison Street lift station. One of them is unreparable, I'd like to replace that at seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. And the other one is going off for a quote for a rebuild. Hopefully rebuild is cheaper than replacement, but I'll let you know in upcoming meetings for that one. If I could get approval to purchase this new one tonight, that would be great.
Don't move to purchase the new one for the money again, Bob, with seven thousand?
Nine hundred thirty-two and forty-seven cents.
Nine thirty-two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
No.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Reporting from the plan commission or the BZA tonight?
Jenny, this is, uh, this is Don Fox, uh, plan commission. We did not meet in January because we really didn't have any business in front of us, but we will be meeting next week.
Okay, thank you, Don. Uh, redevelopment commission, can you report first, Sally?
Uh, nothing new, I, I reported at the last meeting. The, uh, our next meeting is on this coming Monday at, um, five P.
Alright, thank you, Sally. Anyone reporting from the tree commission? So we'll move on to Clark's report.
I'll try to make this fast, uh, I do have any claim for over two thousand dollars that had already been approved that were, like that. Um, the McManoys had a water leak at the, um, in part of January and February. They are asking for forgiveness in the school bill and the amount of forty-five dollars. Which we calculated, it was on their slide at the, the whole box, and it did not go.
Got a motion to approve?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second thing I have is TCU and other banks, the TCU, they have a program called Positive Pay. Basically, what would happen is I would upload all of the checks that I've written, the check numbers, the dates, the receipt and the amount. And then when checks come in to be cashed, it go, they, they make sure that it's on the list that I've sent them to confirm that we've actually written that back. And it's a way to take one, one layer of fraud away from those ones who did it. Um, the cost for that, I believe, is forty dollars a month. Um, and I sent a couple of, from that to you and the information, and if you are supportive, um, uh, make a motion to approve you agree. um, uh, make a motion to approve your agreement, it's new for the Positive Pay program.
I don't know if you've listened to the TCU Positive Pay program, if you've been, if you've developed.
You haven't had any problems in the past, have you?
We have not, and we've been very fortunate. Um,
Another quality.
But I also, if we do hear about in different cities in town, they had cyber attacks, but, you know, I don't. It's just one more layer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and I also have another agreement from South Shore, manage IT services, take care of our internet, our computers, all this stuff that, um, none of us really willing to acknowledge. So, um, there, the new contract is three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars a month. That is an increase, um, last year, eight thousand two hundred and ninety-two. However, we've also increased the number of feeds, um, the number of computers that they're supporting, um, some other services have been added and, it's, it's a combination of them, of these, but also us. We've also.
Is that something we can put up in the bid? I'm just asking, is that, are there other funds out there?
That we can take next year, when we did the municipal process a couple of years ago, there was no one really out there.
Okay, right.
Um, that was the only thing to take on.
Um, so, at this point, I wouldn't.
Rocket this year.
I would rocket this year if, if it's something that we want to do, or I, that's fine.
Because that's a pretty healthy, we just.
It is, it is.
That's a healthy increase.
It is a big increase, yes.
Thirty, thirty-three percent.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my point.
It's taken.
Thank you, ma'am. Look, Mr. Motion.
Yes, please.
Don't move. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the next thing I have is cancellation of outstanding warrants. The state board of accounts asked us to cancel those checks that have been outstanding for over two years and those requests from two thousand eighteen. I provided a list and there's a total of one thousand four hundred and nine checks, but I could just have a motion to cancel those outstanding warrants.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I sent you out an email about paging some of the pandemic pay that we've made available to our employees. Just as a, something to chew on for a little bit. I haven't heard your response from anybody, but that's something that we could discuss a little bit.
You want to just put on the agenda for the next one, so we can?
I, I want to get a little bit more information. Uh, finally, just a reminder that, um, we do have a proposal for Baker Tilly to complete a water and sewer rate study. And we've had that proposed for months, um, but it's a new year, and I'm just putting it out there to remind you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen. All right, attorney's report.
Uh, you know, I don't have much, just got a team Lakeshore update, uh, haven't seen the motion that I was expecting yet, but, uh, he said first in March, ask us to clean the. Uh, I'll follow up, uh, and if I hear anything, I'll share off the video, you know, all of you. And, uh, as far as I know, we're still sort of on game plan and on track, so. I'm trying to keep it, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Is anyone here for an ordinance violation or utility shut-off? Uh, we next have citizen input. Uh, we have a lot of people in the room that probably have citizen input, I'm assuming, because we're not used to seeing you. But I'm going to start with online, just to make sure I cover that. Is there anyone online who would like to unmute themselves for citizen input? Okay, thank you. Also, we'll do citizen input in the room.
Hey, um.
Can you go ahead and state your name for the minutes?
This is Mike Wyatt. Los, Mary, Jim, okay. We got a question about the, the trail. You live on South Main Street. Wondering if that trail is going to, you know, take up our property on the front, on a street there, or if it's been changed elsewhere in town.
I, I'm guessing it's a right-of-way issue, or what do we?
From what Jonathan showed me and what I told you, uh, Jim Harper, the part that they're buying the easement for is from basically the sidewalk out with, with the, out to the street. And so, it, it, yes, yeah, yes.
Does it include the sidewalk, uh?
Yeah, and the sidewalk would be ten foot wide. And my understanding is that Bob, um, is going to be, the town would be taking care of that ten-foot wide sidewalk once it's solved.
Okay, so it's going on our property then, from the sidewalk to the street?
It's going from, from it, yeah.
To the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Well, that whole, if I'm right, I lived on Sixth Avenue, right, next curb. So, I just find out how much my property can, I was not aware, nobody sent anything else.
You know where the sidewalk is.
Yeah.
That sidewalk. And that's, I made the, and, uh, I've got a question. I think they, I think flag at one point, I don't know if you guys knew the flags out there.
Yes, I did.
That was, I think, the, the line to the sidewalk.
Um, okay, I got a question, then. You're taking from sidewalk and you're taking out towards a road. Are we going to be able to put our trash cans out on this?
Oh, yeah.
Because, I mean.
Most of the town, I, the reason they're asking for the easement is that most city lots end at the sidewalk. And then the town actually has an easement from your sidewalk to the road. Um, you were originally county, and then it was heated, you know, it was annexed into the town and county turned over the road to the town, my understanding. But your properties actually go to the middle of the road.
Okay.
And what we're doing is buy a strip or an easement that we're required to buy by Endot. In order to build the trail, we have to have clear ownership to it.
And there's no problem with me driving back and forth across?
No. Your driveways will be put in there and, okay, okay, you know.
We have the mailbox.
Yeah.
And my understanding from what I was told, and I think it's Bob that told me, was what they would do is they remove your mailboxes, they were do- doing the concrete and then replace it where it's supposed to be when, you know, so you'd only be out of, you know, service hopefully, they take it out the day that before the guy, or after the guy delivered and give it back in.
Going to happen?
It depends on how quickly those easements are done. Endot schedules are as long as four years, where you get the grant, right? And we're, we're fur- we're further into that four-year process. You get a grant, you go through environmental studies, you have to get releases on that environmental. You go through, uh, preliminary engineering, they have to survey that whole area. That alone can take a year and longer. Then you go through acquiring those easements, you're in that phase now. And then you finally hit construction, and Endot will schedule construction based on however quickly these other phases happen. So, generally, an Endot grant is a four-year cycle. If you don't get it done in four years, they slap your hand a little bit. Um, but they're a little nicer than, say, uh, the other, the state agency called OCR, Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Those grants are usually over a twelve-month to eighteen-month, and that's a little longer. Department of Transportation takes their time about these things. But, yeah, they, they gave us the grant, um, about, we're year three of Stellar, about three years ago. So, they get slow starting on the application process. That whole first year is nothing but a pause to say, you've got all your paperwork in order. So, are you still on the line, by the way?
Jenny, can I jump in there?
Yeah. Yes, please do.
The, all the eas- easements that we need to acquire have been acquired. I believe Karen's sending out those checks next week for all those, so. Most of the acquired easements are from Wabash South. The rest are, we already had clear right-of-way on.
Okay, so we're already in the right-of-way on some of these.
We're, we're already going to construct in the right-of-way, and I believe Mike told me that this project goes out to bid sometime in July, if I remember right.
Okay.
It's more than likely going to construct like this year or early next.
Yeah, so if, if it's already in the right-of-way, we already have the ability to do that, which is the case a few earlier tonight, hearing us talk about a different phase of the trail. We have right-of-way on Academy Road and State Road Ten, so where the state basically says you can work in our right-of-way. And like on State Road Ten, there's a sixty-foot right-of-way on each side of the road. So, we would be, our trail in that right-of-way. And what Bob is saying is there's right-of-way on this particular part of the trail. On other parts of the trail where we don't have right-of-way, that's where we're, somebody to say, can we please put our trail in here?
There's a trail that's, no.
Yeah.
We'll be maintaining our trails.
Another question, you guys are taking that too, are you guys going to put up a curb for this thing, or after you put the trail in, or how's that going to work, or?
Right, I'm, I'm guessing there will be curbs on that. I don't know the design, I haven't looked at the design myself, but generally, you have them.
The trail would like, it's not that there, next to my sidewalk.
Get it be over your sidewalk.
Yeah. It'll be like a brand-new sidewalk, only wider than the current one.
Yeah, because my sidewalk is already there, and then you get that, that little strip. Yeah, and that, that, that's like.
Existing sidewalk comes up.
The existing, right, and it went to this side of the sidewalk, and it was ten feet. I was up there, so.
Yeah, that makes sense, it's usually about that distance. And Bob is saying that the current sidewalk will come up. There won't be an old sidewalk there, you'll see, it'll be brand-new. Yeah, it'll be a lot wider. Okay, is somebody online? Don, did you have a comment, Don Baker?
I did, um, I'm not going to speak, um, you know, exactly with my neighbors on, uh, South Main Street, but I think we do have some similar concerns about this project. Mainly looking at the, uh, infrastructure improvement project that happened this past fall. Uh, and it was well-intentioned, right? We needed drainage and, and, and infrastructure improvement there. Um, but I think, and, you know, and I appreciate all Bob's leadership and John's leadership as well. But, you know, sometimes when we get the contracts signed and we actually get to work with all these people, we find that the story's sometimes a little different than what we're told in, 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 in advance. So, I guess what I would appreciate is, um, I had spoken with John about this project coming up, uh, and, and with, we copied Bob on it, uh, about having, wanting to have some type of meeting for the Main and Davis neighbors and other affected property owners. Um, because I know our, our house in particular here on Main and Davis, we've probably got about a hundred and forty feet of, of frontage, so that's probably one of the larger impacts from this project in town. And I know some of my neighbors have questions there, too. So, um, we had, we had met maybe a year and a half ago with the engineer um, when John and Endot and others presented a meeting. And, you know, they had made some comments about trees being replaced. Um, they had given us a chance to speak to the engineers and make requests. And I know I had requested that all of our parking not be taken away, if we can at least have one parking space. But now with John gone, and, you know, these kinds of projects, you know, being picked up and someone else leading it, that some of these things might just not get addressed. So, I'm going to ask respectively, respectfully, if, uh, the town would have some type of meeting between the engineers and the actual, uh, affected homeowner. Homeowners in this area, so we have a little bit better idea of what to expect than maybe we did this past fall.
Okay. This council, I assume, would be okay with that, if we make that arrangement? I think that's fair.
I would really like to see exactly what's going to be happening to my property.
Yeah. So, um, Don, just, um, because there's multiple properties in that neighborhood, could we communicate with you as sort of a liaison with the neighborhood? Arrange that sort of a meeting, would that work for you?
Um, yeah, that'd be fine, I'm just going to have to look at my email just a little bit more regularly, but yeah, that's not, that's not a problem. I look, you know, I had looked, uh, for emails from John quite a bit, because he's, I had asked him in the past, can you please let me know when there'd be meetings about this? And of course, John's not here now, but I would be, well, willing and able to, uh, to reach out, and I just have to get my neighbor's, uh, contact information, other than just saying hi. But, and then there may be some other neighbors, though, that are beyond the, our area, you know, further down the street, either direction that might be interested as well, but certainly for the people on, uh, in this neighborhood, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Jenny, I'd suggest.
All right, thank you.
While you have Mike Reese here to run both of those meetings concurrently or at the same time.
Yeah, is it, we, we were planning on having that, that work session, so, um, we'll definitely. So, Don, we were going to try to get the engineer here on a separate phase of the trail. Um, so, we may have him in town where we could potentially do this, but that's a pretty quick meeting, it's like in the next week or two.
We don't have time the day of the week, that is, or?
Uh, we were looking at the eighteenth or the nineteenth as a potential dates that I was going to give him to see if he would be available on either of those dates. So, um, and granted, we could schedule this separately with him as well, but as Bob said, if he's going to be in town anyway, we might be able to schedule something then. Uh, but let me get back to you on that, Don, after talking. I, I don't know what his availability is yet.
And I don't know, you know, if you, I don't know how far along this is in terms of the engineering, and I think, I think I heard Bob say that they're going to be taking biz this, this July, did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's probably some things that still aren't even a hundred percent determined yet, I imagine.
Yeah, possibly, um.
Okay. Um, well, if it, if it works out to meet on the eighteenth or nineteenth, I would be available then, because I'm, happen to be on spring break, but I don't know if my, uh, but I would love to reach out and continue this conversation, whether it's on those days or some other day that's, uh, mutually agreeable.
Okay. Well, I will follow up with you, and could any of you that would be interested in that, could you leave behind your address and phone number? Because we would obviously have to try to call you and not leave it all on Don to do that. But we will schedule some sort of meeting then. Okay?
Much appreciated.
Sure. Was there any other citizen input there? I think there are people in the hallway still, maybe? Okay, no other citizen input?
JD, you were had reached out to me earlier saying about some, um, some road issues and storm rain, and Bob was checking into it. He also sent us a picture, so.
Okay.
I'll forward the pictures to you, and, um, but I did let him know that Fleet and Terrace, Fleet Park Way and Terrace are, um, on the list for paving. So, he was happy to hear that.
Great, thank you, Karen. Okay, so we'll move on to council issues. Rich, do you have any council issues?
Um, just a, I guess, a very brief, uh, allegations that were made earlier concerning.
Wait, guys, and Rich.
The ineffectiveness of, uh, of the visitor center, but, uh, I think that there, there is ample, um, a lot of what was said to me is not factual. And, and, she, some documentation concerning that, um, uh, it's, it's troubling that these allegations with no actual basis. That's all I'm going to bring up myself to say.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Phil, any council issues?
I have none.
Phil's council issues?
Well, ma'am.
Sally, any council issues? Now, I'll go ahead and get back to you, sir, go ahead.
Okay, just to sound real quick, um, Theresa and I, I got all these, you know, up here. Okay, just something, like, um, the reason I, I got all these, you know, up here is because none of us, besides the first letter that Karen and I were talking about, I have in my pocket from an engineer, that's the only time that we were ever to have had any word in any of this. That we have updated us whatsoever in the past year, whenever we got the letter. That's why I'm upset.
Jonathan.
I agree with him, and I think I had more information simply because I would have. Sally helped me, specifically.
Jonathan was actually told me that he was amazed because there's a, there was another company that was supposed to do, send all that information to you, and turned out all they sent was a letter. Give us your land, here's how much we'll give you. And that basically is what it said. It didn't have a, it didn't show what they were asking for, what they wanted. And I did take, and I have no clue where Jonathan found it on his computer. But, uh, I did take Tim Harper and his wife when he asked, that Jonathan printed out for me, that shows the layout. So I'm sure that exists somewhere.
They want much less of your property than you thought.
Yeah, because that, his way, I was kind of guessing of what Jonathan told me last month, is they're going to, they're going to, you know, the whole front. Well, after the last two times, my property was damaged from construction.
We'll have to find out from the engineer, too, who was hired to communicate that. There's usually a third party there.
Yeah.
So, so Endot would want to know that that wasn't done very effectively, too, because Endot requires that to be done. So, and that engineering firm is going to want to know that as well. You know, because they're relying on that as part of the communication process. And the public hearings with all these grants, sometimes they're a year or two apart. So you, you feel like there's all this time that you don't hear anything. It's what happens when it's a four-year process instead of a one-year process or a two-year process.
Yeah, plus, you know, that front, that front strip was, I guess, they didn't, you know, you could see that was put down, when grassy. You know, it was a good beard that was supposed to have been put back, the way it was supposed to be. And this was like crap, and that really pissed me off.
Well, thank you for coming in and expressing your concerns, and we will arrange a meeting and, um, get some more information to you, as well as Don and anyone else in the neighborhood who might want to attend that. We'll be sure to communicate about it. Um, so we appreciate the fact that you would show up and communicate with us.
Don and Mike and I.
Yeah, we're.
Right next to each other.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, because she's right in the middle, and Don's there, and I'm on the other side.
Right.
So the advantage of living in a small community, you actually know your neighbors.
Yes, I tried to. Thank you all, really.
Motion to, motion to adjourn, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. I shall. You don't have to sign this one right here. It's just the, when that one, I'll get it when you're done. No, because we're not sending the letter yet. It's the same Endot letter that.
Okay, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
Yeah.